Thank you very much. And now I would like to ask Council LeBlanc to lead us in a moment of silence for his dad.
Thank you. My dad passed yesterday morning, and I'm going to make it short and brief. He was a -- I'll say what I have to say. My dad was not only a good father, he was also a great person. He loved his family and he loved his life. He was the neighborhood dad, and he played everything from football to handball with all the neighborhood kids. He was a kid at heart. He was loved and admired by everyone he came across and wouldn't hesitate to lend a helping hand to anyone. There is not only a hole in my heart, but a hole in the hearts of all that had the pleasure of knowing him. Thank you, everyone, for reaching out the past couple of days. You are and you will always be greatly missed by all, Dad. I love you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Madam Clerk, please call the First Order of Business.
First Order of Business is oral communication.
Public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Anyone for oral communication tonight? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
The next order of business is presentation of the update on the City CBD regulations, and that's going to be continued to August 13, 2019.
Thank you.
Next order of business is the Sawyer Free Library Architectural Team. We got in the update on the library's concept design for renovation and construction.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Deborah Kelsey, our library director, to the podium to introduce the presentation. Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce the Board of Trustees. Seven of the 12 are here tonight. So we have -- I'm sorry, you are all going to stand for us, right? Thank you. Fred Cowan, John Brennan, President. Joanne Riley, Murn Sibley, Vice President. Simon Paddock, actually Chair of the Capitol Projects Committee. Peter Feinstein. And Fran Aliberty, all-around good guy. Thank you. And our architectural team is Matt Odens from Odens Elo. He's the designer. And Maria Fernandez Donovan is the project manager from Doran Whittier. So Matt will be giving you the presentation, and hopefully there'll be time for some questions and answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Odens. I'm with Odens Elo Architecture. We've been working in collaboration with Doran Whittier on this project, and I'm going to give you an update tonight on our latest exercise. This, we've completed just recently a six-month study following a successful grant application last year to the state for state funding. The library was awarded roughly $9 million. That, as you may know, that previous submission was based on a new building. We were asked to take a look at a possible renovation expansion scheme to be able to compare the two, develop that scheme to the same level of completeness, price it, and be able to compare them apples to apples in terms of cost. So I'm going to run through that renovation addition option. This was selected as the preferred plan by the committee and the trustees. One thing to point out, as it relates to schedule, this is a very long process. We're at the end of our six-month concept phase. We're now in a holding pattern for fundraising, both by the fundraising committee but also funding from the state. And it's unclear what that timeframe will be. It could be as long as three years. It could be shorter than that. It has everything to do with the libraries that are ahead of us in the waitlist for funding. But we, as part of what was approved by the state in this latest bond, we're pretty certain that we're guaranteed that money at a certain point. So assuming, kind of worst-case scenario, fiscal year 2021 -- oh, sorry, 2022, six months to accept the grant, a year of design for the library, bidding for about three months, and then roughly two years of construction, we're looking at about a seven-year process here, conservatively. So that puts us in a new building in spring of 2026. It's possible that we might be able to accelerate that a little bit, but we're still looking at a 2025. So this is a long process. There will be lots of opportunities to engage the community, come back to you, meet with other stakeholders in town. So, to walk you through the plan, this is an aerial view of the existing library. For those of you that don't know, the library started in the Saunders House. It was expanded in 1913 to provide a stack wing. They needed more room for books. And then in the '70s, the larger addition by local architect Charles Manell was built. And that is the building that we are focusing on preserving, along with the Saunders House. The expanded building more than doubles the size of the library and provides the same program of requirements that the previous scheme did, based on the program that was developed by the library and submitted to the state for funding. It preserves the existing Manell building, adds primarily to the back, which is the west side of the building, a little bit along the south side, tries to maintain the look of the existing building to the greatest extent possible, preserve the front landscape, the amphitheater at the corner of Dale Avenue and the pedestrian street, the landscaped gardens. There will need to be some reworking to develop an ADA-accessible path from Dale Avenue into the library, and at the same time, we're trying to solve an ADA-accessible route for Saunders House, which currently does not have an ADA entrance. This is a plan of the existing library. This is, again, where we are looking to expand. The existing Manell building will be gutted on the inside and fully renovated, as well as exterior improvements to improve the thermal performance. I mentioned an ADA-accessible route from Dale Avenue. Improved wayfinding on the interior. And a better connection between the library and the Saunders House, which we can talk about more when we see some of the exterior views. This is an interesting site because it's a sloped site. It's a three-story building. That means there are two entrances, one from parking and one from Dale Avenue, on two different levels. That's a unique aspect of this building, and so trying to solve that wayfinding problem of people entering on two different levels and needing to find their way to the sort of heart of the library or the main circulation desk is something that we feel like the current building does not do particularly well, and we thought that could be improved. So on the lower level, coming in from parking through a covered porch into a lower lobby, and again, this is the limit of the existing building. So the back wall of the Manell building is now an interior wall between the existing building and the new addition. Into a lower lobby with a main open stair up to the upper-level elevator at the back of that lobby. The lower level is primarily community space. There's a large, flexible community meeting room with roughly 100 seats, facilities that support that, restrooms, a kitchen, gallery space. There are several different-sized, flexible study rooms, creation space. There is a staff position here which can monitor the comings and goings at that level, the info research area, and then backed by the local history collection. The main staff offices are also located on this level. Moving up, then, to the middle level, which is accessible from Dale Avenue by way of this entrance, which is reworked. You come up this main open stair. Whether you come from Dale Avenue or that stair, you arrive at the main circulation desk on this level. This level also houses the majority of the adult program, nonfiction and fiction collections, seating organized around the perimeter with access to natural light. And we feel an improved connector between Saunders House and the library with some covered outdoor seating and a shared landscape between them. A sloping walkway, not a handicap ramp, so no railings, so a gracious, easy path to get up in an accessible way to the front entrance of the library and a rear entrance into the Saunders House. As I said, we're preserving the front gardens here. This will be -- this area of gardens will be improved, and we're looking to embellish the gardens along the north side of the building to incorporate some terraced landscape and a more gracious pathway communicating from this garden down to the lower level and the lower entrance. The upper level houses the children and teen program. Again, stair and elevator coming up through the central open space, which is top-lit. Children's are in the existing building, and teens are in the addition. Every level has a variety of flexible meeting rooms of various sizes, supporting different kinds of events. The children have a dedicated program room. Teens have a gaming room and a creation room, and then there's a shared program space between them that is accessible from both suites. Some three-dimensional plans, then. This is the existing building, and I'm going to show these so that you have a frame of reference for the addition. So this is the third floor of the existing building. So we're going to work our way down. Current third floor, current second floor with entrance from Dale Avenue. This is the stack wing that I mentioned previously that allows connection at this level. Currently, there is not a connection at the second floor -- or the third floor or at the basement. And then this is the lower level of the existing building. This is now the expanded lower level. So you can see we're pushing out towards the parking lot with an entrance alongside this meeting room, coming in from parking to a lower lobby, up a generous stair in a centrally-lit atrium with an elevator at the back of the lobby, community meeting spaces, info research area, local history and staff offices. This is the second floor, then, with the ADA-accessible entry from Dale Avenue, a glass connector between the library and Saunders House, the main open stair coming up to a central service point for staff to greet patrons, adult stacks. Generally, we try to keep stacks low, so we're improving sightlines throughout the library. Security is obviously a big concern, but also we're trying to make this feel open and bright and a place that you want to be. And then the third floor, children's program is located within the footprint of the Manell building, and the teens are in the addition. This is that central stair opening that goes all the way down to the lower lobby and shared program space between the two sides. And then a view of the roof. So we think that we can get some benefit out of the south-facing side of the existing roof to sponsor solar panels. We also are taking advantage of what we think would make sense as a flat roof, both to support solar panels to the greatest extent possible on that addition, but also to be somewhat deferential in terms of form and scale to the existing building. This is a light, a clear-story light monitor that's bringing light down into that central stair. A couple of sections now. These are sort of dollhouse views, cut through the building. We're looking, obviously, up towards City Hall from the parking lot, so we're cutting through the addition. This is the lower lobby, main stair, and atrium up to the second floor, and then up to the third floor. Elevator is here. So this is that staff area that I mentioned, study rooms, conference room and adult program on this floor, program room, and you're seeing the children's room beyond. I'll note that that's the existing rear elevation of the current library that is now an interior condition. These openings will be preserved, and they will either be open between communicating spaces or have glass in them, depending on acoustical requirements. This is now a section cutting the long way from Dale Avenue down to the parking lot. So you can see, we actually have to come up a little bit from Dale Avenue to the second floor. This is where the adult program is. There's a main reading room in the front of the building. Children are on the top floor underneath the top clear story. This is the atrium between the existing building and the new addition. You're seeing the meeting room, adult program, and teen room. Now, a couple of views of the interior. You're standing in the addition, looking back towards the original building. Again, you're seeing the back wall of the Manell building with the openings preserved and either glass or open, depending on the acoustic needs. So this is the adult nonfiction stair down to the lower level, up to the third floor, program space in between the two. A view of the lower lobby, looking up through that main stair, and a view of the interior of the new adult reading room. So you're now, you're at the front of the building, looking towards City Hall. This is Dale Avenue. We wanted to open up this corner, make sure that there was a stronger visual connection, both from inside the library to your community, and also vice versa, looking into the building as you're coming down Dale Avenue, and have that really be an important corner. It's an important civic building, and we thought this was the place to invest some energy. In terms of exterior development, I mentioned we're trying to preserve, to the greatest extent possible, the look of the Manell building. We do think that there's room for improvement in the link. That addition, the stack addition, was never intended to be a link. It was intended to house books, and so it's not particularly welcoming or open. So we thought that a lighter glass connection without a mechanical penthouse on top of it would reduce the scale of it and really have this feel more like two buildings rather than three. The historic Saunders House, the expanded renovated Manell building, and a very simple glass connector between them. At the same time, we're trying to open up the new entrance to the library to make it, again, more transparent, more welcoming, and ADA-accessible. So as you can see, there's a sloping walkway, no railings. It's a more gracious slope up, renovating the existing fountain and trying to create a nice shared garden landscape that is an amenity both to Saunders and the library. Another view, and these are pretty conceptual, too. I just want to reiterate. But a view from the corner, looking down the pedestrian way. You can see the addition here and the Manell building. And then a view, which you really will never get, but just for illustration, this is sort of looking from central grammar towards the building. So you can see a very clear delineation between the existing Manell building and the new building. The intent is to differentiate them, not try to just replicate what's there now. Keep the addition very simple. The base is painted white brick to match the painted brick of the library. The upper two floors are currently imagined as a much more transparent kind of jewelbox sitting on that more solid base with a lot of transparency and perhaps some other material that provides the vertical rhythm that you get from the arches in the existing building, but in a reimagined way. So with that, I can take any questions.
Well, thank you for tailoring your presentation to our timeframe. We really appreciate that.
What did I do? Brevity is not my strong suit.
Yeah, but it was great. It was perfect. So, councilors, part of this was to see if we had any questions. It's certainly early in their process, and Matt said, you know, gave us that timeline. But let's start with questions. So Counselor Cox, do you want to go? Oh, Counselor LeBlanc, go ahead.
I think it looks awesome. I know some of it's conceptual. So I've had some questions asked to me, and we've had this discussion up at council probably about last year. But some of the questions were, well, one of the questions were, why do we need a new library? Can you explain to us and the public that are going to be paying attention to this what the library does for the city as to helping the children, helping the elderly? It's not just, you know, going in and looking at card catalogs anymore. It's a community, you know, spot for people to go, educational and stuff like that, because I know everybody has a phone, and you can get some instantaneously. So that's the question that's asked to me mostly, and I try to give them a good instance on why. But can we hear it from?
Yeah, I, well, I'll give you a response based on, we do a lot of work with public libraries throughout the state. So I can tell you where we've seen library trends go, but I think Deborah probably is best suited to talk about this particular building. Generally, we find that despite the debate about, you know, books versus digital media, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how Kindles and e-readers are obfuscating or obviating the need for books, and nobody goes to the library to get books anymore. First of all, that's not true. There's been studies that have shown library circulation has gone up in some cases. But really, what we have found is libraries are a way for people to connect to their communities. Libraries have always been a free place to get information, whether that information is coming from books, from digital media, from conversations with community members, with staff. It's a place to go learn how to become a citizen. It's a place to go learn how to start a job, start a new business. People take classes. There are children's programs. As a father of a young child, we spent countless hours at our local library, you know, on a rainy Sunday or Saturday, because what else are you going to do? And they were great opportunities. So we see those kinds of community services as an equally valid part of library programs. As a result, most libraries aren't set up for that kind of flexible program. There isn't a lot of space for quiet study or for co-working, for different classes of different sizes, a computer class, or a local knitting group wants to get together, or a larger presentation. And so this library is providing something, this design is providing something that the current library does not have, which is a lot of that kind of space. I think at last count, we had nine or 10 different-sized and sort of differently-equipped flexible rooms that were for anything from gaming for teens to the large community room to quiet study rooms for tutoring, and larger rooms for study groups or classroom-style setup. So that kind of flexibility, we see as a huge part of what libraries do today. Deborah, I don't know if you want to?
Because that's exactly what I tell people.
My simple vision of this, which is really what our strategic plan is all about, is creating a library that's really a platform for the community to become what they want to be. So to retool for jobs, to connect with each other, to create, to learn, to grow, to socialize. It's, in our current facility, we really do not have any enclosed space that's useful, and that's what people require today.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the finished product. Counselor Cox?
I have several questions, so I will just pose one and then circle back if time. What are you going to do for access to your services while you're under construction? And I know, based on the timeline, it's 2024 to 2026, so we have ways to figure that out, but I'm just curious.
So I gave you a little sneak preview of what we're thinking about. So we would be in temporary store, it's temporary central site with a satellite library services throughout the community, and whether those are going to pop up in existing libraries between the schools and other community centers. And that we, this has been a model that has been used in this community before, and we may actually have an opportunity to call back a bookmobile in some form. I think between those two things, we'll have a great opportunity to reach out more effectively into the neighborhoods.
How long do you think that for the bulk of those two years, will you be completely out of service in the?
None of it. We're required to be operational.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe a month. Matt could, Matt would actually know better. I think it's about a month of trying to get everything out and everything back.
Thank you.
Counselor Memhart?
I just wanted to say thank you. I had a chance to study these plans last night and, again, this morning in advance of this presentation, and, you know, frankly, I'm very excited by it. I think it's spectacular, and I think, most importantly, it's very respectful of what our community has asked for our library. I think it makes that bridge between our tradition and our history, the Donald Manell Downtown Civic Center, and new public community space. And I just think it's, I can't wait for it to be open and my grandchildren to be able to enjoy it with me.
Okay, Counselor Holmgren?
I'd like to echo Counselor Memhart and say thank you, all of you, especially because I know that there are lots of hurdles to be jumped, specifically with fundraising. So we really do appreciate all of your work, and I can't wait to see the new library when it's done.
Thank you. Counselor Gelman, you're next.
Thank you. I echo what they say. I wanted to ask a question on security. I know that we were here possibly six months ago, and we discussed some of the security issues, and you went forward and were able to hire security folks. But in terms of this new infrastructure, what types of security measures are you able to take? Because it's now going to be a new renovated, beautiful building.
So there's a natural passive security by having complete sightlines on the part of the staff and all the people who are using the facility. In terms of whether or not we will keep a professional security force, that would be something that would be decided as we move into considering what the needs are. There's certainly room for that to happen. There will also be the usual surveillance systems and all the other safety systems that are required in a modern public building.
The only other thing I would add to that is, aside from meeting the program, security is probably the second most important thing that the MBLC, the state board that oversees this construction grant program, is focused on. And so in all of our libraries, we're really thinking very hard about how do you maximize visual supervision, often by a very small staff. Gloucester is blessed with a staff that is more robust than many communities, and that helps. But it's a big library, and so making things as open as possible, being smart about where you put people. The decision to put the children on the third floor was in large part driven by security concerns of having them on the ground floor, adjacent to parking and, you know, a major entrance. And so with that, how do you make it easy for families and mothers with strollers to get up to the third floor? to get up to the third floor? But those kinds of, of considerations, how do you supervise the bathroom doors to make sure that you can see who's using the restrooms? Where are the blind spots? And it's not to say that 100% of a library can be seen from the, you know, couple of strategic staff areas. We do use security cameras in, in many of our libraries. Generally, those are not actively monitored. It's more of a, you know, God forbid something happens, you have a record of what happened. But, but security is something that we take pretty seriously and it, it does influence from the earliest level how we start to think about how the building is laid out. So the sense of openness that you, I, I hope got from some of those interior views gives you an idea of, of the way that we're starting to think about how spaces relate to each other.
Thank you.
Councillor Hatt.
Beautiful. And reminds me of the writing library a little bit that we went through and so thank you for that tour. With the classic building in combination with bright glass, open, sort of see-through, magnificent. So my question is, the three-year period of fundraising and administrative approval and funding from the state, does that get accelerated based on the effectiveness of the fundraising campaign? In other words, if you, it's not, it's not related to that?
Well, the, the availability of the grants, the state money is tied to the libraries that are ahead of us in the queue.
Which, so at this point, we, we started in a pack of 32 libraries and we were in the middle at the beginning of this grant. So we were 14th. We're now sixth on the list. So they're releasing the projects when, and we have to be ready and, and then everything will be a go. So we have to have the money in hand to have the state grant released to us.
And the follow-up is what, like, so what would, like, as far as the eye can see, what would be the fundraising goal to get the $9 million? What would, is it a 50/50 or is it a?
So this is a, this is a 40% matching grant, reimbursable over a five-year period. It's a, we, we have to expend money and then they reimburse. The goal includes additional parts of a project that are not funded by the state. That includes renovation and preservation of the Saunders House. And there's also aspects of this overall plan that are not covered, just are not covered in any state construction grant. So the range that we're talking about, we also have to consider where the, when this project's starting. So there's escalation in costs for every year we don't start from now. So the, and there's fundraising costs. So we're floating numbers that are under $30 million and hopefully we'll get in line with what we can actually raise. We don't have answers to that. The Board of Trustees will be conducting a feasibility study about fundraising late summer, early fall, and we'll have a better sense at that time.
Any, councillor O'Hara.
Thank you. Looks like a beautiful project. How do you accommodate for time in building code changes? And also as far as Saunders House, is there any rework planned within that structure?
As it relates to changes in code, I mean, we, obviously we try to keep up to date with what's happening. We generally, and the state is good about giving advance notice about potential code changes. We know that there's one that, that's coming up. So we try to keep on top of that and we have code consultants that we work with that help us keep on top of that to make sure that we are working with the, the most up-to-date codes, as are all of our engineers. Generally, what happens is that from the time the project is permitted, you're locked into whatever the code is at that particular time. So if the code changes, once you're permitted, you're still working under the, the code that was in, in effect at the time of permit. But up until that time, we're keeping track of things to make sure that we're staying code compliant. We're obligated as professionals to meet the code, so it's not an option to not do that. Hopefully that answered your question.
As far as the Saunders House, is there, in your plan, is there any rework taking place within that structure?
There was another, there was a preservation architect that did a feasibility study for Saunders House that identified structural upgrades, aesthetic improvements, potential installation of a new elevator to improve accessibility. That was outside of the work, our work from this study. So we were only kind of peripherally involved with that. We were aware of it. We have a copy of their report. We met with them a couple of times to coordinate our work. But to date, we have not been involved with that work, although it is imagined that that would be part of this larger project. So I can't really give you more detail than that, but, but yes, the plan is that there would be improvements and that would address some code issues, although I imagine it's a historic building that is of, you know, older vintage and so there are probably areas where they will not be able to meet certain code requirements and presumably would be grandfathered at that point. We haven't, I, I don't know that those have comprehensively been identified, but that they will try to tackle as many of those, I imagine, as they can.
Thank you. Okay, second round. Councillor Cox and councillor Holmgren.
I really appreciate the fact that you guys actually listened to some of the complaints about the, the first floor plan and about getting rid of the older building and seeing it incorporated in here. It's just absolutely beautiful. That being said, the area that's at the front entrance on Dale Ave, there, there's an area that seems to be darker in the evenings and it kind of hides things. How are you going to get rid of that? I, I know that you've said where the books are, that you're going to put glass and everything. Are you eliminating that?
Are you referring to vegetation? Are you talking about vegetation or?
No. The area right out front that, when you're walking past the fountain, that area where the, there's an outlet and you have the door to the Saunders House and then the door to?
So the first, the first thing in this plan is that you can see the entrance to the building, which is partly what is causing that dark area that is now, we have a covered, we have a covered porch and then the doors, the entrance ways are not visible. So it feels like a dark kind of hole. This is a much lighter, more open plan. You can actually see through the connector building and there will be some coverage over the entranceway because we live in, we live in the Northeast, we have precipitation of all kinds. So I think overall, it will be safer and you will be able to visually see what's going on.
Okay. And the parking spots, how many parking spots are you going to lose?
Wait, I think six. We have 36. We, if we lose six, we've had a conversation with the mayor and she had a kind of novel suggestion, which we will follow up on, which would be to offer the staff alternate parking, not directly next to the building. So we could end up actually with a gain.
What about the leased spots for the firefighters? Are you going to be able to continue to do that or is that going to be eliminated with the loss of spots?
That's a gift from the trustees to the fire department at this point and that can be revisited if need be.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Holmgren.
Thank you. I'm not sure if, if you guys on the board or in the administration saw this article that a constituent brought to me last week. It was on NPR. It's been all over the place and it, it is about how local libraries are now offering resident social workers. And just sort of following up along the lines of the security issues and the, the people who need the library are, are not just people who are housed, but people who are struggling with homelessness, substance use, et cetera. I know that there are lots and lots of things that are priorities at this point for Sawyer Free, but I was hoping this was something that, that could be considered as well.
So I, you're actually speaking right to my heart. I think this is a very important thing and many people who have entered librarianship have also considered social workers that other avenue of, of public service. We actually work closely with the Grace Center. We have, one of our librarians is also a, an ordained minister and a councillor and many of us have worn more than one hat in our careers. So this is part of how we do business, but there is a difference in, in professional standards as to what we're allowed to do. We can connect people with services, but we don't work as case managers. And that would be ideal to be able to provide that at a central location. We're working with a lot of the service providers in the community to talk about how to centrally locate on a, on a predictable basis, ways for the community members to access services in a respectful way. So that's a bit of a stay tuned.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillors? Well, on behalf of the council, we want to thank you for coming. We really appreciate this presentation and the, you know, we've, of course, some of us saw it earlier and we've all heard about it. And I want to thank the library board for being so thoughtful in their, in your consideration of the, of the public input from the original first iteration of, of an expansion for the library. This really addresses a lot of issues and we really appreciate that. So thank you so much and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, madam clerk, next order of business.
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointment.
So councillor LeBlanc.
Thank you. We have one new appointment this evening. Ordinance and administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Stephanie Buck to the records management advisory committee, term to expire 2/15/22, and I assume move.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Stephanie sits on another board. We told her that she would be an excused absent this evening because she's already been before council for an appointment. So I'm looking forward to her serving on this board.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Next order of business, madam clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
So with the consent agenda, I want to ask councillors if they want to pull any item off of the consent agenda. I would pull off item number three in the mayor's report into appointments. Councillor Cox.
Item three, under council orders.
Councillor Gilman.
Item two, under councillor, councillors' orders. Thank you.
Okay. And councillor Memhart.
Item number 11, under the mayor's report.
Others? Okay. With those removals, do I have a motion to accept the? Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, we'll start with, let's say councillor Memhart on item number 11.
Thank you. I just wanted to draw your attention to the mayor's exhibit number 11, which is the conservation agent, Adrian Lennon's summary report on our successful 2019 Good Harbor Beach piping plover program with three chicks surviving to fledge and defy south. I would like to point out however, that Adrian's report does not really give adequate credit for the crucial contribution by our squad of dedicated piping plover volunteer monitors, over 60 of them, who worked hard to protect the nests and the chicks from April through July 12th, often with coverage 12 to 16 hours daily, and also by the work of Alicia Penarosa, Penzarosa, who is our animal advisory committee chair, and others who worked to coordinate and schedule this monitoring work, which was a huge job. I'd like to acknowledge our good fortune to have local bird experts, including Kim Smith, Deborah Kramer, and Chris Leahy, who have inspired both national attention and also our volunteers. And separately today, you've received an excellent report and photos from Kim Smith, which complements Adrian's report on the plover season. I'd like to give credit to our partner, Dave Rimmer of Greenbelt, who installed the symbolic protective fencing around the nesting plovers and their habitat, and our animal advisory committee, working with the city council, the mayor's office, our animal control officers and police, passing and enforcing our updated dog and beach regulations, which do have a sunset clause for our Good Harbor Beach protections and now need our review and our renewal before next season. I'd just like to conclude that Good Harbor Beach is a busy crowded beach, especially in hot weather and at high tides. And our city has done a remarkable job this year balancing the required legal protections for the nesting piping plovers and their vulnerable chicks with the enjoyment and use by our residents and our visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was very important to recognize all of those people. We appreciate our conservation agents' report, but councillor Memhart, that really gives the color to the, what was really the foundation of the success was the, the volunteers and all those people working together and I think we all recognize that. So with that comment, a motion to accept that report. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. Councillor Gilman, you'd be next for your council order number two.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to just describe this very briefly because it will require a full council vote on August 13th. Specifically, the city council back in 1990 requested that the legislator body take this action to officially dedicate the above as a public park. However, the vote was overlooked and it expires at the end of the next biennial season, so we have to revote it in order to pass it along to the state legislator for action. So I just wanted to comment that there's been a tremendous amount of research in history that our city clerk, Joanne Sinus, led along with Chip Payson, Annie Magriffonte, Senator Tar, and also the neighbors of Wheeler's Point and Shore Road. So they've done a lot of legwork to pull this all together. Also Dana was involved as well. So I just wanted everyone here to understand that it's coming back to us because we need to see everything twice. There's no need to send it to subcommittee because basically we just need to revote it for the books and then it will go forward and to be declared a public park through the state. So with that, motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. Councillor Cox.
Wanted to draw your attention to council orders number three. Request that the city of Gloucester accept section 33 of chapter five of the Acts of 2019 regarding Airbnb community impact fee. Originally, the state had said that the municipalities would manage their own impact fee, so we decided to wait for a year to see how much revenue was going to be in play, to see if it was worth our time to collect the revenue. And since, over the last couple of months, the state laws changed and they are now going to manage it. So as chair of budget and finance, I feel it's my responsibility to bring this forward to make sure that we are collecting as much revenue as we possibly can for the betterment of the city. So that, that is why I moved to have this put in place.
And you will be talking about this at budget and finance?
Correct. I am going to, I am not going to be at the next budget and finance meeting, so I'm asking for it to be continued as well to the second budget and finance meeting in August. So that way I can be there to discuss it. I move this.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, thank you. So I removed item three, new appointments from the mayor's report and specifically I have a question about the zoning board of appeals, appointment of Catherine Schlichte. And I do have a question for the mayor. I guess that would be Mr. Distino tonight. Thank you for coming. So our city charter under section 210 says, "No unelected appointee shall be appointed to more than one multiple-member body unless..." to more than one multiple-member body unless said board or commission is interrelated." Ms. Schlichty serves with great distinction on the Community Preservation Commission, and I know she would serve with great distinction on the zoning board of appeals, but we do have that issue in the charter, and I wanted to see what the administration's thought was on that, since it's clearly contrary to the charter.
Okay. Let me give you a little bit of...
Can I just tell you one other thing that I'm really concerned about? Both of the bodies that she would serve on are voting bodies. The zoning board votes for permits, and the CPC votes on the granting of monies. And my concern is that if there was some issue with one of those votes, and someone took exception to her vote because she's on two committees in contravention of the charter, that we would have a real problem. So, I think we need to address that. Maybe you need to revisit that with council, or, but let's hear what you have to say.
Okay. So, over the past five years, and the whole time we've been here, we've been working, quite honestly, full-time, filling boards and commissions and committees that were completely depleted, especially the important boards in the city that, you know, keep the city's business moving, whether zoning board of appeals, people who need variances of their homes for affordable housing, in-law apartments, whatever it need be. The zoning board appeals has been, you know, a difficult, we've been in constant contact with David Gardner, the chairman. As soon as we get someone appointed, someone has to resign, whether it's for health reasons or some other reason. So, it's been a difficult proposition to keep the city's business chugging along. Catherine, as a well-respected attorney in town, stepped up, asked us, she needed, we knew she needed help, we needed help. She got a 90-day appointment. Her 90 days came up. She asked to be appointed full-time. You know, we think, you know, she's great on that board. We think she will do a wonderful job. You know, if you look at these two boards, and to your point, Mr. President, about someone who votes on something that, or for a permit, and then, clearly, that would be a conflict of interest, which she would have to recuse herself from the vote. If you look at the CPC committee, you know, there's a member from the Conservation Commission designated by that commission, the Historic Commission, the Planning Board, the Parks and Recreation Department, Housing Authority, Space, Recreation, Preservation, Affordable Housing, Municipal Finance, I mean, these are all attributes of the makeup of the CPC committee. The zoning board, by ordinance, provides relief in variances to preserve the character of the neighborhoods in our city. It's one of the most important things I do when I talk to people. That's why they have the provision in the ordinance of the zoning that you have to live in the city for three years before you can be appointed, because they want you to know the neighborhoods, because it's important that they preserve these neighborhoods and the character of these neighborhoods. So, we feel that the work provided by these committees is interrelated, and especially with a well-rounded CPC committee that needs, you know, uses all of those different, you know, elements of membership. Also, Mr. President, I got to say, this is an interesting objection, as you yourself probably have voted a dozen times on the same issue. I mean, you just had poor Mr. Cowan in here, who is a Hall of Fame Counsel on Aging and Board of Health member, who serves on two committees. And we've got a dozen people like that in this community that are willing to serve, and I understand the charter, that it does say that. And maybe it's time to change that provision, and maybe that's why the Charter Commission is looking for signatures to do it. I would relate, I would say to you, our feeling is, they are related enough to let Catherine serve. We feel that she has great integrity, great character, and if there ever came a point where she had to recuse herself, she would. So, we stand by the appointment.
So, I don't disagree with O-N-A, any of that stuff. And I guess what I would ask, because this is to be referred to O-N-A, that, you know, we go ahead and refer to O-N-A, and they will make a recommendation to the city council, and as long as we vet that issue, that's my concern, that that issue be vetted, not just left silent, because these are two very important committees, and she is tremendously talented, and we're lucky to have her willing to serve on these committees. But I just want it in the record that we've considered that issue, and we have an answer for it. That's all. Counselor Cox.
That being said, I am currently working on language for a home rule petition with Legal to change this, and it'll be referred out on the 13th of August for the first time, and then we'll vote on it the following meeting. But my, or what I've been working with the administration on is that we change the language for people to allow max of two boards instead of saying conflict or complimentary. I know that doesn't have any bearing on this particular case, but moving forward, I do hope that I have everybody's support to file a home rule petition to make that change.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that said, I'll move to accept that item of the new appointments from the mayor's report.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of July 15th.
Counsel LeBlanc.
Thank you. We have one item that I'd like to bring up for discussion. The last ordinance administration meeting we had, we had a vote to put fluoride, removal of fluoride, for council vote. I'd like to open the meeting, this part of the meeting, up to a discussion on whether we push it to for council vote, or we push it to a public hearing with the council's consent of discussion.
Yes, that's a good idea. So, the process, and the ordinance and administration heard this matter and did recommend a motion for the home rule petition as Counsel LeBlanc described. That would normally go to council vote, normally that would not be a public hearing. So, we have the discretion as a council to say, we can still have one if we want. So, that's what the discussion that Counsel LeBlanc is suggesting, and that I'm suggesting as well. So, I don't want to prejudice anybody's view, but, you know, we get to decide whether we want to sit through a public hearing on that matter, or whether we think that we've heard all the merits that we need to hear to make a decision on that motion, which is in your packet in the O-N-A report. So, Counselor Cox.
Can we vote to have it open up for discussion before we discuss?
Yeah. So, can we have a motion to have a discussion about whether we have a public hearing on this matter?
No, 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 no.
What?
The process is, we need to vote to allow the discussion on whether we're not, we're going to go for a public hearing or for council vote, because this is...
Yeah, that's what I just, that was the motion.
Okay, you said public hearing. So...
Or not.
Okay.
Or for council vote.
Right.
Okay.
Or for council, just for council vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, it's open for discussion about whether we want to have a public hearing on this matter. I'm sure you've all read the home rule petition. Counselor O'Hara, we'll let you go first, since you're...
Thank you. I brought this as a council order many, many months ago, to request that the city seek the removal of sodium fluoride from our public drinking water. And I did that. There has been many changes, many issues that have happened with our, within our country, namely, there was a major issue in Sandy, Utah. That's real time. It's happening. They're dealing with it as we speak. And I feel that this needs to be heard in the public, that we need to hear from both sides, pros and cons of the sodium fluoride. It's a chemical that we introduce into our water system. Ninety-nine percent, or over ninety-nine percent of our water, public water, goes for other than drinking. So, it's used for watering lawns, making ice at O'Malley Rink. So, it's potentially contaminating our environment. Again, things have changed. There's public knowledge out there on this chemical that we use. We do not give a choice to the public. Their choice is to buy bottled water. Some people can't afford bottled water. So, I've requested this as a council order, again, so that the public can weigh in, both pro and con. And I feel the only way that we can do this is through a public hearing, and that's why I've been very adamant on bringing this as a council order. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
So, on the discussion of whether we should have a public hearing or not, I'm, I feel at this point, we should have a public hearing. And the reason is that we are being asked, as a council, to use a home rule petition to overrule a non-binding vote that our citizens made less than four years ago, where they voted 6,000 in favor of keeping fluoride in the water system, and 3,000 voted in opposition. This order that's on the table is, would, if approved, would be basically a signal to our voters in our democracy that we felt that the council had more say in representing this matter than what they did only four years ago. So, I'm really troubled by a home rule petition, and, but because that that's so important to this particular matter, I think we do need to have more discussion, and I hope that the people of Gloucester understand, you know, the folks that voted in favor, you know, it's important that they understand any changes that have had been made, but it's also important that they realize what's in front of our council. We're being asked to move forward with a vote, of which the majority of the people in Gloucester, by 6,000 to 3,000 wished contrary to what we are doing. So, I think it's a big deal, and I think the more conversation we have, the better we will make the right decision as a council. Thank you.
So, just a reminder, we're talking about process here, and we are going to have a vote. There's no question, we're going to vote on this. The question is, do we have a public hearing to accompany that vote?
And I said that I supported a public hearing because I think the more vetting is important.
Okay. Counsel Hect.
I agree with the council that just spoke. It's imperative that we have a public hearing on this. The information since the vote has been enormous in terms of research. This is a moving target, and I think there's just different information available today than there had been for the, for the non-binding referendum. So, I feel it's imperative to give our public a chance to weigh in on this. This is a very important topic. It's a topic that's really important to a lot of people, and I think they really need to have the voice, one way or the other. Thank you.
Counsel Holmgren.
So, if we do end up voting this non-binding, I mean, this home rule petition up to the state legislature, it will have to be brought forward by Ann-Margaret Ferrante and Bruce Tar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you think that Ann-Margaret and Bruce Tar would go against 65% of Gloucester voters?
I don't know.
Hmm, well...
If we, if we propose, if we vote for a home rule petition, it'll go over to them, and then they can do with it what they want.
Well, I would say probably I would vote in favor of a public hearing, but I'm not sure if we're going to hear anything different from what we heard three years ago. Four years ago, pardon me.
Anybody else? Counselor Cox? Oh, all right, Counsel LeBlanc first. Then Counsel.
Okay. So, this has come across O-N-A a few times over the past few years. I've gone to our public health officials. I've asked their opinion. I've asked people that I've talked to on the streets. I've reached out to health professionals. We've had our DPW director up here years, a few years ago, and our, our public water supply director, Larry Durkin, up here. Our Gloucester water has natural fluoride in it already, so the amount that we add is very, very minimal. So, removing the fluoride from our Gloucester water is a fool's tale. It can't happen, removing the fluoride from our water. So, I don't know what we're trying to do here with our home rule petition or a public hearing, because there is going to be water in our fluoride occurring naturally, period. Okay? So, I have enough evidence over the past couple of years. I've been on the council for eight years, so I've been part of this ballot question. I've been part of the, the, I don't want to call it propaganda against it or propaganda for it, but there are people that rely on this fluoride in our, in our water. It's miniscule that it gets dumped into our lawns, in our water supply, in our harbors and whatnot. I think we have enough evidence to have it for a council vote and move it to see what the state thinks of us doing it, and I trust our public health officials on what they have to say. And I agree with Counsel Holmgren. We had an overwhelming majority vote for this just a few short years ago. So, and I'm going to stick by what the voters had to say. So, I think this, we vote on it, and, you know, the public has already spoken. With listening to the public, when they go to vote, they're a little bit more educated when they go to the ballot box and know the question. What we're doing here at city council, there's a lot of people that don't pay attention, so they put our, their lives in our hands, or what we have to make decisions, what's best for them. That's our job. So, that's what I'm going to say. Stand by, and I think we vote on this.
Thank you.
Not worry about it.
Anybody else? Counsel Cox.
I think our biggest failure up here is that we don't follow our process. There's three, three means of doing this, and we've convoluted, in this particular matter, how we do it. So, the first is the signatures by a private citizen to get a public hearing. The second is for council vote, where we put something forward, we wait until the next meeting, and then we vote on it. And then the third process is council order. You can't introduce a council order and then change it to for council vote. That's, we're not following our own process here. For council vote doesn't get a public hearing at all. The process is, it's introduced on our agenda, we have two weeks to digest it, and then we vote on it. And that moves it up to the state. Signatures by a private citizen requires so many signatures, they automatically get a public hearing should they get the required signatures. Council order, depending on what it is, gets a public hearing. So, I'm not, in this particular matter, because it's not our right to remove fluoride, what is the outcome of a public hearing that we're going to get? I have no problem moving it forward for a council vote or having a public hearing. I just, I want to set the expectations appropriately, because we've managed to mangle our own process so bad that I don't even know what the outcome of a public hearing is supposed to be, because having, it just doesn't make sense. So, I'm, I would like somebody to tell me, if we move forward with a public hearing, we're not voting on anything, and that's the whole purpose of a public hearing, is to vote on something. If it's for council vote, then we need to just vote on it at the next meeting and send it up through the state.
Yes, and I, I think I agree with most of what you said, but I do think the council has the discretion to hold a public hearing on anything that it wants. We are going to vote the resolution as it came from O-N-A, and that is, you know, and we can hear, if we wish, to hear members of the public talk about the merit... we wish, to hear members of the public talk about the merits. We're not really talking about the merits right now, because we're talking about the process. So I guess that's my question to counselors. Do you want to listen to more factual, more evidence about the science of this, or whatever? We did have a public hearing. We did have a citizens' petition of 150 votes. We did have that public hearing about a year ago. We heard everything there was to hear. And I don't know what more we can hear about that. I can tell you that I am not in favor of a public hearing, but I would certainly yield to the will of the council, because I think we can just vote on it and move on. And I think, I agree with Counsel LeBlanc, we're elected to do that. We are not, you know, there is a point in our process where it's up to us to make the decision. And I feel perfectly comfortable making the decision on this, you know, this motion from O&amp;A right now, not right now, but when we vote on it, without having a public hearing. We have heard from the public time and time again, and we heard when we had the non-binding vote. So I'm perfectly comfortable with making the decision on behalf of my constituents. Counselor Holmgren?
Based on the testimony of my fellow counselors, I would change my vote. I would rather not have a public hearing, frankly. And I would also like to add that I misinterpreted the draft home rule petition. It wouldn't be sent to the state. It would be sent to the mayor and to us. And I, so here we are.
Well, no, if we vote, the council votes on the recommendation from O&amp;A, then it will go to the mayor for her signature. And it doesn't come effective unless she signs it. That's true. Once she signs it, it would go to the state legislature. That's where it goes. The home rule petition is asking the state legislature, right now, the authority to remove fluoride from the water rests with the Board of Health, not the city council, not the mayor. This home rule petition asks the legislature to allow the Gloucester City Council to become, to have that authority over the Board of Health. And that's what this is all about. So, yeah, well, we don't have to vote now, because we're not voting on it right now. We're talking about whether we want to have a public hearing in two weeks or not. So, I mean, I can make that decision, I think, probably myself, if I wanted to. But I did want to hear from counselors.
That was the whole point, just having a discussion.
Yeah. Counselor Cox?
So there's three ways to get a public hearing. The city council president, three city counselors, or the mayor, also. So what happens if you say no to a public hearing, but three city counselors vote yes?
Well, I think the three city counselors vote yes for, so that we would have a public hearing if three city counselors vote yes?
Or no.
Right. Counselor Nolan?
I think that that would be for putting up a proposal for a hearing. I think the motion in front of us is for a council vote. The discussion that we opened up was whether we wanted to go with more information. It probably wouldn't be a public hearing as much as informational for us to make a decision. So I don't even think that three counselors tonight saying that they wanted to have-
No. No, this is, no, you're right. The three counselors wanting to have a public hearing on this matter would be a separate matter from this. This is, we have a motion that's come from O&amp;A with this home rule petition on it, and we are going to vote on that motion at our next meeting. The question before us is, do counselors prefer to have hear from the public on this matter or not? We don't normally do that. And I would say, if it was up to me, I'd say, no, I'm fine with just having the vote. And if three counselors, you know, after this, want to go ahead and make their own proposal, then they can do that, too.
Right.
But we've, you know, and again, we've heard a lot about this. We've spent a lot of time on this. And we owe it to the public to do the public's business and move on. I'm ready to move on. So that's my feeling about this. So I'm willing to just say, we'll have a for council vote and no public hearing.
Second.
Any other comments? Do you want to take a vote? All those in favor?
I need a second.
We heard a second. We had a second.
No, Counselor, I need a second to determine if I'm going to change my vote. So I'm just asking you for, to give me five seconds. Thank you.
What? No, I don't want to resist.
So can you reiterate what your actual motion is? Is it to, a yes vote would be to have a public hearing, a no vote would be to not have? What are we voting down? The for council vote or the public hearing?
We are, there is no public hearing right now. So what we are asking one another to do, do we want to have a public hearing on this home rule petition that has already been, has come through O&amp;A to go to the state legislature? Do we want to have a public hearing about that? That's the vote.
Can we do a roll call?
We can. Yes. Counselor Gilman?
I have a point of order. If this is ruled down, is there a timeframe where a petitioner could go and get the 10% of the voter's signatures in order to put it back on the ballot? Or is there a pause after we have to, after we would vote this down?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. And I don't know that I'm really that interested in providing an answer right now. I don't know. That's, you know, up to the citizens. The citizens can do whatever they want in accordance with the ordinance. And if people want to go out and get 3,000 signatures, you know, more power to them.
Okay. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc?
So I'll just try to clarify this a little bit. If, after this discussion, if three counselors want to put in an order for a public hearing on this, they could. Okay?
No, not on this. Not on this motion. This motion-
Not on this motion. Correct.
On this subject, yes.
It would have to be a separate order for a public hearing.
And they can start all over again and do whatever.
Correct. But I just wanted, we wanted to open this up after O&amp;A's discussion and not just leave it on O&amp;A to make this decision to put for council vote. We wanted to have an open discussion with the nine counselors to get the flavor of what we thought the process should be, and how we, as counselors, feel, whether we're supporting this council vote, to move forward for a council vote, or to move, a couple of counselors want to put in a separate order for a public hearing. So that's how this would go.
Correct. Counselor O'Hara?
Thank you again. Just to reiterate, way back in March, I put a request in to put a council order for the city to cease the addition of sodium fluoride into the Gloucesters drinking water. As a city counselor, as a representative of the people, again, I put that council order forward. This is a, where we are today, I think, is related to my request for a council order way back in March, which we've never, that has never moved forward. And again, I want to reiterate the fact that I believe that we owe it to the citizens of Gloucester. We change our city council, our mayor, every two years. We change our President of the United States every four years. Although there was a non-binding vote, I think it was over four years ago, times have changed. Things have changed. Knowledge has changed. What, again, to, just to reiterate, what's happening out in Sandy, Utah, a city of 94,000 people, they contaminated. They had an overfluoridation of their public drinking water system. Again, this is one of the reasons why I put a council order together in March, which has never been heard.
Well, just to remind you of the process, we asked our lawyer to give us the options. We, the city council, we do not have the right to make that vote. He advised us that the only way we could get that right was through a home rule petition, that anything else we did was not going to be effective, was not going to be legal. That's why we're here. So yes, if proponents of taking fluoride want to go get 3,000 signatures and put it back on the ballot, you know, as I say, more power to them. That's what their right is. Our job right now is to vote on this motion for a home rule petition that's come from O&amp;A, and that we normally don't have a public hearing on. And I'm just getting from the city council, the notion of, do you want to listen to more public testimony about this, or do you just want to vote on it next time? Counselor Cox?
With what Counsel O'Hara just said, if it was put through as an order, if we followed the process as a council order, it is a required public hearing. Whether or not we have the authority to remove it or not, it's still a public hearing process. If Counsel O'Hara put it in for a public vote, or for council vote, then there is no public hearing. So I'd like to get clarification on, I mean, was this just a mashup of processes? Like, what is, it's still unclear to me what the outcome was supposed to, what your intended outcome was supposed to be. If it was a public hearing, then we should move forward with that. If it was for council vote to get fluoride removed, then we should follow that path.
So the council vote to take fluoride out of the water is not legal? That's what our lawyer said in his memo to the council.
Okay. So through the chair-
So we're not going to entertain a order to vote for something that's not legal? We're just not going to do that.
I agree. But through the chair, if Counsel O'Hara was never advised that he should withdraw his order, and Counsel O'Hara set the expectation that there would be a process and a public hearing, you know, I don't know, I don't want to punish someone for not getting the process when we were, when people were not advised as to the real process. Does that even make sense?
Administration.
Can Jim or Legal, both being here-
Well, Legal is who prepared the memo for us at our request, so.
So can I make a little clarification, Jim?
I actually see a memo.
So a yes vote would move the question to a council vote. A no vote would allow a public hearing to be held on the question. That's where we stand.
No, we're going to vote on the motion that you, that came out of your committee. We're going to vote on that. The question is, before we vote on it, do you want to have a public hearing about the merits or not? That's our discretion.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. And then, and then whatever happens after that, happens after that. And counselors can introduce orders and try whatever way they want, and people can get petitions and all that kind of stuff. This is, right now, we're down to the specifics of this. So.
Questions, Brad?
Yes, sir, Counselor.
Just, and a point of process, and perhaps the city clerk could help, but if this does or does not go to public hearing, but there is a vote, and this is, we decide not to use home rule and send it to the state for this, I do think it's a very important question to some constituents. What would that do for the ability to go get 150 signatures to have a public hearing? What would that do to the ability for three counselors to, you know, put this on a public hearing? I just really, personally, I need to know the cause and effect, and procedurally, what does happen. Does the fact that we're going to vote on this without a public hearing or not, with a public hearing or not, does that do anything in effect to the three counselors bringing for a public hearing? Does it do anything to the 150 signatures that are citizens to bring in a public hearing?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is that, is that a fact?
Any of that stuff is independent of what we're doing here now. Right now, we're entertaining this, the motion about going to the state legislature. Any of the other avenues for considering any public matter, whether it's fluoride, or supporting the fishing industry, or whatever the councils want to do, is, remains open. If you're worried about, I mean, we have some things where, you know, some petitions for a special city council permit are voted down, and the applicant can't come back for two years.
Exactly.
But that's not this case. That's not here.
Thank you.
If you have the authority to say no public hearing, then why are we opening it up to discussion? I mean, just for safety's sake, or just-
No, I'm perfectly happy to do that myself, if that's what you like.
I mean, again, we're not following process.
We don't have to have a vote on this if you don't want. So, do you guys want to vote or not?
I'd-
Huh? You want me to make the decision? I'll make the decision.
I'd like to-
I elected you, city council president, to make the decision. So, either way.
So, okay. So we've had a good discussion, and we don't have to have a vote. So this matter is, yes, Counsel LeBlanc?
I'll remove my motion to send this to a public hearing or a, for council vote. I think we should, it's already on the agenda for council vote. I think we should just-
Yes. It's on the agenda for council vote on August 13th.
Make a motion to remove my-
Thank you. Motion moved and seconded. So it's withdrawn. So right now, we have no motion. And so we'll just leave this on the agenda for city council vote for August 13th, and no public hearing connected with that, because we don't normally have a public hearing in connection with city council vote. And any other action that people wish to take about this particular subject matter, they can go forward with it. Okay? Thank you. So anything else to say from your O&amp;A meeting?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Next, the order of business. Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of July 17th.
Counselor Gilman?
I'm so grateful that you're all still here. So I know it's been a long night, but you'd be happy that we're moving along. So, on a motion by Counsel Holmgren, seconded by Counsel Lumberg, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council, on behalf of the city of Gloucester, accept the property in any buildings contained thereon, known and numbered as 35 Concord Street in Gloucester, and recorded at Book 7977, Page 496, at the Southern Essex District Registry of Deeds, and I so move.
Second. Moved and seconded? Do you want to just give us a little narrative on that? Did you want to tell us about what this means?
Yes, I'd love to.
And why these Boy Scouts were here tonight?
So this is exciting. So the Charges Youth Program had gone through some changes since the 1980s, when by vote of the city council, the property at 35 Concord Street and the building on it was conveyed to them. As a result, they recently approached the city through Counsel Nolan to return the property to the city. It was noted that this wasn't a default of any of the conditions being violated, but that the nature of the Charges organization had changed. The Boy Scouts hold a 90-year lease at a dollar a year for a portion of the building, and that lease will be conveyed with the deed, which will allow the Boy Scouts to continue to use a portion of the building on the 35 Concord Street property. The P&amp;D Committee learned that another portion of the building is intended to be used for storage for two, if not three, of our city departments. The original intent of the conveyance, 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 what am I saying wrong? Conveyance, sounds weird, of the property to the Charges Youth Program in the 1980s was that this property was to be used for a public purpose, and the Boy Scouts meet that use. So there's a deed on file, and if we do approve this, it will be signed after the vote. And another thing that we also discussed was if another 501(c)(3) or another public organization wished to use the building, and they would just need to go forward and make a request through the mayor's office. So this is exciting, and I hope the council joins me and all these wonderful Boy Scouts and leaders here, and supports this initiative. I think it's great for the city. And thank you, Counsel Nolan.
Thank you. Counsel Gilman, any questions? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor, say aye. Oh. We don't have a public comment on this, but.
Um, going to the district regarding the-
No. No, we're going to, this is just for city council vote. Thank you.
I understand, but I think some of the-
Well, this is, this is-
Do it on mic.
Pardon me? Pardon me? No. So anyway, this is for a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. Next item of business, Madam Clerk. Yes, there's the scheduled public hearing.
Scheduled public hearing, public hearing 2019-040. Amend Gloucester Code of Orders, chapter 11, section 1110. After special events, transient vendors' parades by adding the following sentence. Further, the Special Events Advisory Committee and/or Licensing Commission shall refer all special events, parades, requests that involve the use of Stacy Boulevard or Stage 4 Park to the city council for final approval.
So open the public hearing. We're going to continue this matter. We originally said to August 13th, but can we continue it to the meeting following August 13th, which is the 27th? Okay, yes, we do. So we will continue this to our hearing on August 27th. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is an update of the Stage 4 Park Advisory Committee and the Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee by City Council Representative Counselor Sean Nolan.
Counselor Nolan? Anything to report on?
So as far as Stage 4 Park, there's a lot of improvements going on. There's been a lot of work with the generous gardeners, the city, the tennis courts, everything that's looking really good. The construction for the visitor's center is going to be going forward, and that's going to be a huge asset to us. Obviously, there's been a lot of activities up there. The Peach parking lot's been full. People have been having a great time. The DPW is doing the best they can with the trash. It's not really their problem. There's a lot of people bringing trash. They do a great job with it, and I'm happy with their work. The Magnolia Woods, we're still waiting on some information on a membrane of whether or not we can gate the upper lot to allow more year-round access for parking, for hiking, trail and, and for cross-country skiing. So with all that said, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Holmgren, an update on our affordable housing and assisted living facilities, which is an ad hoc committee that you are chairing?
Thank you, yes. So we've had two meetings. This committee was formed at the request of Council President Lumberg at the P and D Standing Committee in conjunction with the mayor's office. And it was formed based on a need vocalized by the public for over a decade for assisted living residences in Gloucester, not just for those in the upper income threshold, but for senior citizens with a range of incomes. So on the committee are Greg Katamatory and Jill Cahill, Karen Carroll, our public health director, David Holden, the executive director of the Gloucester Housing Authority, Scott Trenti, the CEO of Senior Care, Sunny Robinson, our former public health nurse and local advocate, Jen Biloff, the housing director at Action, who's sitting in the audience, and myself as ex officio. So we've had, again, two productive meetings so far. We've discussed the changing standards of assisted living residences across the North Shore, as well as options different communities have, depending on a variety of factors. Currently, we're researching options from many different angles. We're very fortunate to be able to welcome Andrew Dufranza of Harbor Lake Community Partners to our next meeting on August 8th at 3:00 PM on Pond Road in the Cada Training Room. We're also pursuing an audience with a director of a local assisted living facility and hopefully, hopefully with a representative from Medicaid. We will likely also look into working in conjunction with other KPN municipalities who are dealing with the same housing crunches we are, and we are stronger together. So more to come.
That's great. As you recall, this issue came up when we were considering amending a special permit for Gloucester Crossing because there's that item in there that they would pursue an assisted living project for that, for that, for that project. It became a broader issue because of widespread interest in what we do to, to make it more, you know, a reality, not just focused on Gloucester Crossing, but in general. And Counselor Holmgren's done a great job of pulling together the people who really have something to say about this. So thank you. Terrific. Okay. So Madam Clerk, next, the order of business?
Next order is the request to the mayor.
Counselor Holmgren, we'll start with you. Okay. Counsel Memard?
I'd just like to say that we're, we're fortunate that we still have the mayor with us. But on Saturday, Saturday afternoon, after 200 years, the Gloucester Sea Serpent raised its head in the courtyard at the KPN Museum. If you haven't stopped by to see it, you really should. But in the heat of Saturday afternoon, I was really seriously concerned that that serpent was going to gobble up our mayor. She put herself at great risk. But Chris Williams' wonderful sculpture was commissioned by some 660 supporters to honor our retiring museum director, Rhonda Faloon. And we are so lucky that we have a new tourist attraction right here in downtown Gloucester. Check it out.
Thank you. I agree. Mayor's lucky that she's still with us. She didn't get gobbled up. So Counselor Nolan?
Not a request, but a little informational. On August 3rd, we are having a second fundraiser for the Magnolia Pier. It'll be held at the Magnolia Landing. It'll be auction, food, entertainment, and a lot of fun. And let's keep this momentum going and get this pier paid for and keep forward with our commitments.
Where's it going to be?
Which is down at Magnolia Beach.
Okay, outside?
For, 5:00 o'clock.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Cox?
Do you have a rain date or tent in case rain?
It's, it's 100% enclosed by 10.
Thank you. I just wanted, it was in our packet for information, but wanted to let everybody know that the Harbor Walk Summer Movies are back, and those are going to be every Wednesday through August. Usually, they start around 8:00 PM when it starts to get dark. So first one is Dumbo. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Counsel LeBlanc?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Hect?
Just a brief reminder that there's a, Seaside Sustainability has a fundraiser, a SIP for the sea on August 3rd at 6:30. It's on the Seven Seas, and it's at 63 Registry. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gilman?
Thank you. Just two quick things. First, I was really happy that all of our councillors signed up to take on the Transportation Survey Focus Group. And just wanted to clarify that on August 1st, Counsel Holmgren will. And it was, it was great. So thank you for your participation. And the seniors that we talked to were really excited about city councillors coming to their meetings and looking for just feedback on something as good as transportation for both nutritional needs and for just exercise. So the spirit is great. The Anis Grom Seafair is this Saturday from 9 until 3, actually 10 to 3. I'll be working the bake sale. If you want to come by, I'll be glad to put my gloves on and give you something sweet. And also, Mamma Mia starts with the senior dress rehearsal on Monday, August 5th. And then following from August 6th until the following Monday, August 12th. 7:30 at the Anis Grom Village Players at Village Hall. So we're excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara? Okay. Okay. Hearing all, everybody had what they needed to say, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Some of us adjourned.